Good evening, everybody. Now see it's six o'clock. I will call the meeting in order and welcome everybody to this May 12th regular meeting of the West Turlock Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency. Members tonight are participating in person from the TID Boardroom here. Members of the public may also participate participate in person or utilize a Zoom webinar feature or by telephone. Members of the public attending virtually will have the opportunity to write public comment via the webinar or phone features for those participating via Zoom. Please click the raise your hand button on your screen for those participating via phone. Please dial star nine on your keypad. Once your name or other identifying information is called by the board secretary, your line will be unmuted and the public comment period will begin. Let's begin with the flag salute. Glad you're lead into the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Jennifer, if you call the role of members, please.
Thank you Chair. Alternate Director Alves.
President.
Director Buck.
President.
Director Espinoza.
President.
Director Maldonado. Director Odom.
President.
Vice Chair Geritzma.
President.
Chair Alamo.
President.
Thank you. I see that as a quorum, so we'll begin our meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak or comment on any item not listed on the agenda can do so now. Is there any hands raised on Zoom?
Thank you Chair, there are no hands raised.
We'll proceed right on with staff updates or budget update. Michael Clipper.
Everyone, for the West Turlock GSA account for the month ending April 30th, we had There was not much activity that month for checks being posted. And as you can see, here's the activity for kind of the budget for the month. And then moving on to the basin account for the month ending in April, we had $553,538.84. And again, just due to timing, we didn't have much activity that much. Moving on to the overall activity. Any questions?
Questions for Michael online?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Next up is our technical advisory committee update. Michael Cook.
Evening Chair Alamo, members of the board. Much of what we've been working on, you'll see on your action agenda tonight, but just a few updates. We just completed our first quarter of groundwater monitoring under our new GSP, Groundwater Sustainability Plan. We broke that up into the ag agencies and the urban agencies and we'll thank Karen Morgan for helping coordinate getting all the urban agencies getting their data into us in time to meet the deadlines. It did highlight to us, we need to develop a dedicated monitoring network for groundwater levels. What we're finding because this year is a dry year, TID started irrigation season a little bit later, so a lot of growers were pumping where they normally do. And so trying to get static water levels was difficult. In fact, we, 18 of our, well, five of the 18 wells we normally use for measurements, we're unable to get static measurements for because they were, they were pumping for the growers. So as you, over time, we will be developing a monitoring network using dedicated monitoring wells, but again, it kind of highlighted that issue, but we have provided the data we need to DWR. Talking of monitoring wells, we, well, we got some wells installed this, this year. We received a grant from DWR, as you remember, on the, in the West Turlock, we have two new monitoring wells, dedicated monitoring wells. And as paired wells, we have a, a upper and a lower aquifer screened interval, so we can get data from both aquifers. On the east side, they installed three new monitoring wells. All these wells were grant funded and we are aware there's a new grant solicitation package for September of this year, so we'll be applying for more grant funds to do additional work to implement the groundwater plan. The applications will be due in December and be awarded in spring of next year. And so we're gearing up for that grant process and we'll keep you posted, but that is a competitive grant and so we'll have to just challenge everybody else for the available funds. And we're also working right now with our consultant team on developing a detailed scope of work and cost estimates for the implementation items. You'll hear later tonight your budget, it's a planning level document, we have budget estimates, we're trying to get more detailed information as we work on projects and programs and also focus on grant applications. And then finally, obviously as a GSA, we put our, our plan out for public review, we got public comment, you addressed those comments in your meeting in January, but once it gets submitted to DWR, DWR also has a comment period, so that comment period has just ended. There were a total of four comments, well, four unique comments, one comment posted twice. All those, well, apart from one letter, those comment letters we'd seen before during our process, so no new, essentially no new comments apart from the Central Valley Flood Protection Board, which submitted a comment letter, which is new. And really it was just more of a reminder that any work along the rivers may need permits from the Central Valley Flood Protection Board. And so I don't think anything will implement, affect the implementation of the GSP or adoption of the GSP by DWR, but again, good to know we've gone through that process and got it behind us. So that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can you repeat the question first and then answer the question, please?
So we had a question from yours, do we get all our money from grants? The answer is no. The, a lot of the work of the GSA is funded by the member agencies, so the agencies you see tonight and Michael Clipper will probably explain in more detail, he works on his budget, there's a call for funds every year and they provide funding. And then, but some of the, some of the bigger projects we've worked on, like implementing the GSP, working on our EIR, we do apply for grant funding from DWR. This is all the work we've done has been funded through grants, but again, oftentimes there's matching funds for that, we have to put up our own money to, to match DWR's grant.
Any questions online?
There's no public comment.
Thank you. Moving on, we got a communications outreach update. Herb?
Good evening Directors, I have four quick items for you. The first of which is that the Association of California Water Agencies is an organization which many of you are aware of. In my capacity at Turlock Irrigation District, I attended it last week and groundwater was, as you might imagine, a big topic. And so just one item that kept coming up, and I know it's something, I don't know how frequently you follow legislation that's going on in Sacramento, but there is a bill that is in the process right now that I wanted to make you aware of. It's AB 2201, co-drafted by Assembly Members Bauer Cahan and Colra. And it, right now it's in the Assembly Appropriations Committee. It passed out of the Assembly Parks and Wildlife Committee by a vote of eight to five on April 26th. And what the bill would require, it would require a lot of things and I'll just go over it briefly, but there's, it would basically require that a groundwater sustainability agency shall not provide written verification to the counties of, for well, for well permitting unless all of the following factors are present. And it basically goes on to say, three different things have to be present at the same time for the GSA to say that the proposed well is consistent, that it would have to be consistent with any, and I'm reading from the text of the bill, consistent from, with any sustainable groundwater management program, so it has to be consistent with what's in the GSP and the programs that are in it. The GSA would have to also note that the proposed well doesn't decrease the likelihood of achieving the sustainability goal of the GSP and that the extraction of the proposed well would not interfere with the production and functioning of exercise of nearby wells and is not likely to cause subsidence. And so that's the type of thing that would be moving along into the process and what the GSAs would be needing to do in order to work with the county as they permit wells under this bill, which is not a law thus far, but I just wanted to make you aware of it. It also would give the GSA ability to recoup fees from, from what it takes to go through this process of deeming if a well is consistent with GSA and GSP standards. And then the thing, mostly from the public outreach standpoint that I'll note, is it would require that the GSA needs to post notification of well permit applications for 30 days on its website for public comment. And this, you know, these bills, sometimes they, they get held over for a year or two, sometimes they, they go and they stall. And so it's just something to note that is going on in the budget process. And I'm not normally a legislative guy, but because I've heard a lot about this, I figured it was something to mention to you, so that's AB 2201.
And is that specific, the, the rules that you're talking about or the requirements that you're talking about, that's specific to just GSAs or is that any municipal agency?
It'd be, it'd be, it'd be specific to the GSAs reviewing the permits that come in from other agencies and the county would be required to come to the GSAs to make sure they get a letter showing that that is within the parameters of the GSP. Three quick other points on a much, on a much brighter note. We continue to work on inter-basin coordination with the three GS, well, not three GSAs, the three, three sub-basins that border the Turlock Sub Basin. And of course, the two of them, the Merced Sub Basin and the Delta Mendota Sub Basin, they're still working to remedy their GSPs within the 180 day window to send back to the Department of Water Resources. So they're not necessarily real, you know, excited to start working on communicating with us at this point in time, but they definitely have addressed that they are excited to do that in the future. But we've, working with the Modesto Sub Basin and others, we've sent a survey out to express their interest of things that they're interested in, what they want to talk about first, instead of just meeting and, and getting together and, and, and talking about things, just kind of getting an idea ahead of time what they're interested in and what we're interested in. So that process has begun, it continues on in implementation. We've obviously talked with them well before GSPs were even adopted, but now the topic changes to how we're going to coordinate during implementation now that we all have plans. And so that continues, just wanted to let you know about that. We're working to draft up now that we're in the implementation phase of Sigma and having a GSP that's adopted and hopefully approved by the department within the next 18 months or so. We're working on developing a five-year outreach plan. We've done a lot of outreach up till this point to get the GSP, you know, passed and to get stakeholders informed in the process, but now we're working on developing a plan like what do we do now? Now that it's been, we're in this little bit of a downtime between the passage of, or the, the adoption of the GSP and then what are we going, waiting for the Department of Water, the Department of Water Resources to either deem that approved and complete or, or inadequate. And so we're going to try and figure out what to do in that five years, the next five years from this point forward. And so look forward for that in the coming, coming months. And then lastly, we applied on behalf, the West Turlock Sub Basin GSA on behalf of the entire sub-basin, applied for an award with the Groundwater Resources Association and we are finalists for stakeholder outreach. And we've applied for that and we are going to submit a video in the next month or so. And then their conference is also in a little over a month and we'll see if we can earn the award. Bit of an update on, on our work that we've been doing with outreach. And that is all I have for tonight unless there are any questions.
I'm lying on when the GSP might be accepted. How long did you say that was potentially?
From the day we submit it, DWR has up to two years by law. And so we submitted it, you know, the 28th of January of this year, I believe, and so they have up to two years from that point to review it. And so I would hope, 18 months was just my backwards math to figure that. They've been, they've been, they've been sending out information prior to that before the 2020, 2020. About 18 months to two years. Any other questions?
2020 should be all done over two years now, correct?
They've, they've issued some initial, they've been, they've issued reviews or letters and so that's why the Delta Mendota Sub Basin was one of those, you know, across the San Joaquin and then to the south of us to the Merced River. They also have received their incomplete notification and they're working really hard right now to remedy the things in their GSPs so that they don't go into probationary status. And none were approved that I recall. Eight were approved?
You?
None were inadequate, right? But, but, but the rest were incomplete, meaning they needed more information, the department said.
Was it, you say 20 plans and 20 submitted, right Val?
12 incomplete, eight approved. And that's for the 2020 sub-basins.
Right, keep making everybody repeat themselves, but you gotta be in the microphone in this for the Zoom and the online callers. Thank you. Okay, thank you for that. We will move on to our consent calendar, which I believe only has one item in it, so I don't think we need to pull that item. We can talk about that item or entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
One second.
Air consent calendars are moved and approved, is there any further discussion on the minutes? Anything online, Jennifer?
A public comment.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Agenda item G, we're gonna start with our GSP annual report. I think Phyllis is presenting via Zoom.
I am. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much. I appreciate seeing everyone, familiar faces this evening, wish I could be there with you. I'm glad to see you all in person. The, thank you very much for allowing me to provide a summary of our first annual report that was submitted to the department on April 1st and let's just dive right in with the first slide. This is a picture of the cover. The regulations require that these annual reports are due by April 1st of each year following the adoption of the plan. So our adopted plan submitted January 2022. That means that our first annual report needed to be submitted to the department on April 1st of this year. It's only two months after the GSP submittal. The regulations say the annual reports cover the preceding water year, so for us, that would have been water year 2021. So if you think about it, we're doing an annual report on a water year where we didn't have the GSP finalized, we didn't have the monitoring network or the projects in place yet, everything was still in development. And, and, you know, at a minimum, the GSAs weren't even yet managing the sub-basin. So the department is aware of this little snafu in the, in the regulations and as a result of that, they don't expect the first annual report to show a tremendous amount of progress toward implementation. But we did, I think, turn in a very good first annual report that had a lot of information in it. And in particular, we had the opportunity to use this annual report for our benefit. Next slide, please. So we used it to update the model for the intervening period from water year 2016 through water year 2021. We finished up the GSP with the analysis and the model through water year 2015. So many of the requirements in the annual report look at the historical, continuing the historical forward. And so this gave us the opportunity to update the model to allow us to do that. We also use this annual report to update our water quality conditions and establish a baseline to allow us to do the future analysis that we need to do under the GSP. And of course, as required, we documented our groundwater initial conditions and it gives us an opportunity to see where we were at the end of the, the analysis period and the beginning of the submittal period and work to improve on those for the next annual report. Next slide, please. The contents required of the annual report are shown here and I'm going to highlight each one of those in the slides that follow. I'll be talking a little bit about that model update process and what we use the model for, in particular, the water budget. We also had to do water use templates, fill those out for the DWR and we'll talk a little bit about that. We presented groundwater levels and flow as required. We also, as I mentioned, put together a water quality baseline analysis and we provided a subsidence update. And then finally, regulations say you need to show the progress that you've made on your GSP implementation and surprisingly, we actually had some things that we were glad to report on, even though it had only been a few months since the submittal. Next slide, please. So let's begin just by talking about the model update. You might recall that for the GSP, we use the C2VCM, DWR Central Valley Wide Model, and we updated it with detailed information on the water budgets for the Turlock and the Modesto Sub Basin. So that's why we call it C2VCM TM, because it covers both Turlock and Modesto. The goals of the update, of course, were to support the annual report with sub-basin wide water budgets, which are required, and to also provide temporal and spatial estimates for groundwater production and changes of groundwater and storage. These are all requirements for this annual report and all subsequent annual reports as well. The model update, as I mentioned, was covering water years 2016 through the reporting period of water year 2021. We extended those time series input files using the best available data as required and verified the model output performance, but there were no changes made to the model parameters or structure. We did this in part just to keep things consistent with the GSP analysis, so it gives us a very nice look at long-term conditions throughout the entire sub-basin. Next slide, please. Continuing on the information in the, put into the model, we incorporated the most recent precipitation data and the graph that you see there on the left shows precipitation for our entire GSP study periods, which again, were from water year 1990 through water year 2015, a 25-year period of historical and current conditions, at least then current conditions. And then we've updated that information for the intervening six years from 2016 through 2021. And I've just, for our edification there, I've just put some information about each one of those years. We really only had two wet years in that entire six-year period. These are categorizations of water year type by the Department of Water Resources for the San Joaquin Valley. The wet periods were 2017 and 2019. 2021, although the forecast wasn't exactly in for the San Joaquin Valley index, certainly it was a critically dry year with only average of 7.3 inches of precipitation in the sub-basin. But if you look at those six years on an average basis, we come up with about 12.63 inches as an average for those six years and that's about 108% of the long-term average. So what that means is those six years give us a little bit of an insight over average hydrologic conditions recently for the sub-basin. So that provides a nice baseline to compare to other information as we go forward. Next slide, please. In the model, we also updated surface water information. It's an integrated surface water groundwater model, as you might recall, and so we have surface water deliveries and surface water operations data that we've compiled using information from the agencies. Appreciate very much Turlock Irrigation District's cooperation on providing us with farm gate deliveries and with estimates of seepage and evaporation for the systems as well as Turlock Lake seepage. That information is, was sometimes input directly into the model and sometimes calculated by the model. Merced Irrigation District provided similar information for their North Side Canal for the Turlock Sub Basin. And then we also had information on riparian use around the river boundaries and recycled water deliveries, providing another water source for the Turlock Sub Basin. Next slide, please. We also took a look at land use and updated the model with respect to any changes that we might see in cropping patterns over the 347,000 acres of the sub-basin. We pulled together information from Land IQ. This is a company that does sub-basin, I mean, Central Valley land use analysis for the department and that information was the most recent information that we had that covered the entire sub-basin. And so now with that intervening six-year period, the model captures cropping patterns over the 25-year study period as well as the most recent six years in the sub-basin. We are doing some additional model updates that we simply didn't have time for in the annual report, but we're thinking about what is needed going forward with respect to implementation and what types of tools we would like to be able to rely on. And land use is a very important component. So we're doing some comparison to recent county data for land use that really wasn't available in time for the annual report. We'll be making that, those changes and some other modifications to the model going forward. Next slide, please. The information that we pulled together into the model gave us an opportunity to take a look at the spatial distribution of production and groundwater pumping across the sub-basin. We input data from the agricultural agencies and their pumping that they pump groundwater wells and, and use that for supplemental deliveries to irrigation, for irrigation. And then the model actually calculates the agricultural private pumping in the sub-basin. So you can see the numbers there, about 93,000 or so from the pumping by the agricultural agencies and about 421,000 from private wells. The urban agencies also provide us with their pumping data that's put directly into the model for 34,000 acre feet or so for water year 2021. And the model helps us with population estimate private pumping at about 9,000 acre feet. So you can see for water year 2021, again, our reporting period, we're estimating that the total groundwater production in the sub-basin was about 557,000 acre feet. Next slide, please. We also look at the spatial distribution of the changes in groundwater and storage for this water year. So for water year 2021, we map out from the model, the changes in groundwater and storage both on a sub-basin basis. And then the model also gives us the opportunity to calculate it on an aquifer, principal aquifer basis. So what you see is the average conditions in the sub-basin on that map. It's actually shown in feet there rather, rather than in acre feet, because that is the output from the model. The model looks at each one of the cells and calculates a volume of groundwater that has either been added to or taken away from that particular cell. And so overall, you can, you can imagine with a critically dry year that we had in the sub-basin, that we had a decline of groundwater and storage for water year 2021. It's shown there at about 295,000 acre feet and then broken down by the Western Upper Principal Aquifer, the Western Lower Principal Aquifer and the Eastern Principal Aquifer. And then the amounts in feet are shown there at the bottom, average declines for each of the principal aquifers. Next slide, please. And we're also required to show the water budget in a graphical basis and this is a graph that you might recall, it's one of the colorful graphs that we've talked about many times in the past. It shows in this particular case, our historical study period for the GSP from water year 1990 through water year 2015 to include the current conditions there. And then the most recent six-year period, which was updated in the model. And you can look at the bottom there to see what the various colors are. The most important thing that I wanted to highlight here is that you can look at that dark black line, which shows cumulative changes across the sub-basin. And when the, when the line is going downward, then that means that water, groundwater is being taken out of storage. There's a decline of groundwater and storage in the sub-basin and then when it's going up, water is being added in storage. And that's why the orange bar jumps around from inflow to outflow, representing that change in groundwater and storage. If you just focus on the black line for a second, you can see that we were pretty much in even balance with respect to changes in groundwater and storage until the early 2000s, when we began to have some declines in the sub-basin and then overall larger declines as we moved into the drought of record, which is the 2013 through 2016 timeframe. And then you can see for the six intervening years after the drought, that we had a little bit of recovery. It's average hydrologic conditions. It's average hydrologic conditions. So what you see is that we've stabilized a little bit with respect to that dark black line not continuing to go down at the rate that it was going down prior to the last six years. Part of the reason, however, is because the recharge that we've been inducing from the river boundaries has been increasing as groundwater levels decline in the sub basin. So if you'll focus on the light blue colors on those bars, you'll see that for the historical period, most of the light blue colors are actually on the lower portion of each one of those bars. That means that the groundwater was actually feeding the surface water on a net basis. And you can see in those six intervening years since the drought, the blue bars have now switched to the top of the the bar. And what that means is that the now we are getting more inflow from the rivers into the groundwater system. So it stabilizes our groundwater and storage conditions a little bit, but it does so at the expense of surface water. Next slide, please. The department provides these templates. And they are there are a series of them in the annual report. And I'm just showing the final two, the sort of summary templates here that are total water use. But there are other templates that all sort of scale up to these final two summary ones. These show water use by source and also water use by sector. We have, we're only required to show water conditions for Water Year 2021. But because we updated the model for the six intervening years, we went ahead and did the templates for all of those those six years. So you can see that that's what's shown here on these templates from 2016 through 2021. Just focusing first on the top water use by source table. You can look there and and if you did the math, you would see that groundwater averages about 51% of total water use. Groundwater averaging about 414,000 acre feet a year over the six year period. And that's compared to the total water use of 808,600 acre feet a year. That 51% actually increased quite a bit to 61% in the critically dry year of Water Year 2021, when there was less surface water available in the sub basin. We have surface water supply primarily from the Tuolumne and Merced Rivers, as we mentioned before. But we do have some recycled water supply that comes from the cities of Modesto and Turlock and some reused wastewater from Hillmar Cheese, all of which is put to good use in the sub basin. So recycled water is also tabulated on that top water use by source table. And then finally, at the bottom table, we really just have the sectors of agricultural and urban in our sub basin that are applicable. Agricultural water use for the averaged six year time period totaled about 94% of of total water use in the sub basin. And urban averages about 6% of the total water use in the sub basin. Next slide, please. So moving now to the groundwater system. We have hydrographs in our annual report as required. There were about 50 or so in our appendix. They represent each of our representative monitoring wells, the RMWs. And the example hydrograph that you see on this slide shows how they're organized, formatted, and how they're used. So if you look at that example hydrograph, you can see that groundwater elevation there in blue over the study period time for the GSP, as well as the six intervening years from Water Year 1990 through Water Year 2021. And what we also have on this example hydrograph and all of the hydrographs that we have in the annual report appendix are what we call sustainable management criteria. The two most important of which are the measurable objective, which is the line shown in green, and the minimum threshold, which is the line shown in orange. As a just as a reminder, the measurable objective is sort of the average conditions of water levels that we'd like to see in the sub basin going forward. The minimum threshold is actually a floor that we would prefer to manage our water levels above. Doesn't mean it has to be above all of the time in every single well. But overall, that represents a compliance point for sigma that we'd like to stay above. And so even though we weren't yet managing the sub basin, we went ahead as required by the regulations and provided information on which of the representative monitoring wells had their water levels at or above MTs and which ones had them below. And the good news is that most of our representative monitoring wells, even in the critically overdrafted, I mean, the critically dry year of Water Water Year 2021, our water levels were still at or above MTs in most of our representative monitoring wells. We did have some wells that had water levels below our minimum thresholds for our sustainability indicator that we refer to as chronic lowering of water levels. We had two of 18 in that Western Upper Principal Aquifer out of with their water levels below the MTs. One of eight for the Western Lower Principal Aquifer and the nine of 21 in the Eastern Principal Aquifer. For the interconnected surface water, the wells closest to the river boundaries, we have four of six representative monitoring wells that were below the MT for the Merced, two of three for the Tuolumne. But all of our representative monitoring wells along the San Joaquin were above the minimum threshold. So these will become more important to us as we move forward. But it this sets up the sort of template and analysis that the regulations require for the annual reports. Next slide, please. So we'll just do a really quick run around the basin, just to take a look at some hydrographs just for your information. And then again, there are 50 or so in the appendix, if you'd like to go and page through the PDF. On each one of these hydrographs, you will see two things. You will see a the what the data for Water Year 2021 circled on the hydrograph in red on this example slide, you can see that. And then the red dot on the map on the lower right hand portion of the slide shows you where that well is. And so just looking quickly at a few hydrographs from the Western Upper Principal Aquifer, we saw that there was, of course, the water level declines that occurred during the drought of record. And water levels did recover quite a bit after that 2012 to 2016 time period. They didn't quite recover to the high water levels that we had seen in the past, but pretty close. The hydrographs are all pretty consistent with the model results. So I just wanted to make that point that we we do check and go back and forth between the model and the the actual data in the sub basin to making sure that we're doing a good job with respect to representation in the model. Next slide, please. Another hydrograph here, just moving a little bit toward the central portion of the sub basin, where we do have declining water level trends that are more pronounced. Here, we're seeing water levels declines of about five feet during the reporting period. And then I just have one more hydrograph on the next slide, where you'll see even a little bit less decline over the reporting period. But again, area of declining water levels. The one thing I'll mention on this hydrograph is that you'll see there is an additional sustainable management criteria line on here called the interim milestone. And what this is is a recognition that it's going to take some time to turn some of these declining trends around in the sub basin. It's very difficult to do that very quickly. And as a result of that, we use interim milestones to alert the department that we anticipate that some of these wells will continue to decline until we can get projects going and until those projects actually have some impact on aquifer conditions. Next slide, please. In addition to the hydrographs, we take this water level data for Water Year 2021 and are required to produce contour maps. These are we we produce one for the fall of 2020 and for the spring of 2021. So those are the data that we have in our reporting period of Water Year 2021. And we're required to do that for all of the principal aquifers. So if you look at these blue lines, these are contour lines. They're groundwater elevations in the sub basin. And we've used our representative monitoring wells as well as other wells in the sub basin to pull together as much information as we can to make a consistent groundwater elevation contour map for the two time periods, the fall and spring representing essentially time periods for seasonal lows and seasonal highs in the groundwater basin. I just have some summaries information there on this map. We see regional flow from to the west to northwest in the sub basin, which is typical of the maps that we also did for the GSP. Those flow directions are modified locally where there's pumping or where there's surface water delivery. So you might notice the declining water levels in the central portion where there's a lot more pumping and the sort of mounding in some portions of the western sub basin, where there's a lot of surface water deliveries. The groundwater elevation ranges are shown there on the summary slide and some comments about the groundwater mounding that we see, that high water levels that we see in the southwestern portion of the sub basin. The natural flow, natural outflow from the sub basin is to the west northwest, and that's being maintained there in the northwestern portion of the sub basin. Next slide, please. And then for spring, for the Western Upper Principal Aquifer and the Eastern Principal Aquifer, you can see very similar flow patterns. If you looked in detail in areas across the sub basin, you would see that there's some water level of recovery. And there's really an increase, average increase in water levels from fall to spring of about 2.4 feet across the sub basin, about four feet in the Eastern Principal Aquifer and stable conditions in the Western Upper Principal Aquifer. So I would like to be able to show you water level contour maps for the Lower Principal Aquifer. All principal aquifers need to be contoured and presented in the annual report. But we don't have enough information in our Lower Principal Aquifer, Lower Western Principal Aquifer yet to be able to do a contour map. So this is a data gap that we have acknowledged in our GSP and are planning to fill very quickly. Michael mentioned before that we have grant funding to get some additional wells in the ground. And we have just recently installed four wells, two well pairs, that would fill some of this data gap. More wells are being planned. You can't really demonstrate your sustainable management unless we have a really good, robust monitoring network. That's the best way to understand what's happening in the aquifer system and the best way to demonstrate to others that the projects and sustainable management criteria are working. So we are moving in the direction of getting that done as quickly as possible. Michael also mentioned a grant application coming out in the fall. So that grant application would likely be available for installation of additional wells as well. Next slide, please. So now moving to water quality, I mentioned that we had used the opportunity to look at a baseline analysis. We followed a methodology that we set up in the GSP and pulled down available historical water level data from the gamma, the state's gamma website off of the GeoTracker website. The six constituents of concern that we had identified in the groundwater sustainability plan or the constituents that we focused on, those include a variety of different types of constituents. As you can see there, arsenic nitrate, uranium, total dissolved solids, 123 TCP, and ketrachloreethylene. Those constituents were examined with respect to the historical water quality data. And we produced six maps that are included in the annual report that provide maximum concentrations during the historical period. So what we're trying to do here is to best understand how high these constituents of concern have been and where, so that we can evaluate future changes in water quality with the purpose of making sure that the GSA management actions and management of groundwater levels and extraction are not exacerbating or degrading water quality. For the second annual report, we'll actually begin this analysis whereby we will be looking at current conditions for the Water Year 2022 and comparing those back to this new baseline to identify any new exceedances of the MCL. So that's a nice opportunity to set ourselves up for the analysis required going forward. Next slide, please. This is an example of one of those six series of maps that we have for the constituents of concern. This just happens to be arsenic. It gives you an idea that we look at wells in each principal aquifer and then examine the data for the reporting period and comparing that back to the historical maximum. For our baseline conditions, we were looking at about 113 wells that had historical data for arsenic. And you can see the statistics there, about 64% of those wells had a maximum concentration that was below the MCL. And about a third of them had concentrations above the MCLs. For the ones that were above the MCLs, most of those were actually public water supply wells. This is something that the public water suppliers are very cognizant of and and have treatment in place. So it these are raw water concentrations, not concentrations that are actually supplied to the public. Of course, there's treatment and blending associated with those concentrations that are above the MCL. But for our purposes, we want to know what's actually in the aquifer so that we can better understand any future changes to water quality in the groundwater system. Next slide, please. Our annual report also includes a land subsidence update. In addition to looking at our representative monitoring wells for land subsidence, we also use this data, which is presented here on this map. This is remote sensing data processed using NSAR. And the department actually contracts for this data on an annual basis. So we get this from DWR for Water Year 2021, which is shown here. And the department is actually increasing the frequency. They're going to be providing remote sensing data on a quarterly basis going forward. In this particular depiction of the Water Year 2021, we look at vertical displacement that's color coded. And the 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 sort of three colors that are shown here are the 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 very, very dark gray in the east, the little bit of lighter gray that you see, and then the yellow in the southwestern portion of the sub basin. So all of the grays indicate no vertical displacement at all in in a negative direction. In other words, no indications of land subsidence at all in any of those gray areas. Some the the reason that one of them is a little bit different gray is that there's actually some rise of the groundwater surface. You know, California is very tectonically active. And as a result of that, we do have some areas where the ground surface is slightly rising. In the southwestern portion, it's the only area where we actually have negative vertical displacement indicated. These are small rates of subsidence in this area. They are similar to what we had seen historically. And there's not any increases in time. And in fact, this is actually a smaller area than we have seen in previous NSAR data sets for the area of vertical displacement. So there's there's no nothing alarming about the data for this year. But I'll just mention that there there's some white there. So these are remote sensing data. So sometimes there's cloud cover and you can't quite get information over the entire sub basin. So we do have some data gaps associated in the eastern portion of the sub basin. But again, with quarterly data, we should be able to fill those in going forward. We use this as a screening tool and we'll be doing this in each annual report to make sure that we catch any area that where vertical displacement and land subsidence is increasing and appears to be an issue. As you all know, from the GSP, there was no indication at all of any impacts from land subsidence in the sub basin in the past. And next slide. So this is the last requirement that I'm going to summarize that the annual report has. It's a it's a bit of a progress report. The regulations ask that the GSA's provide information on implementation of the GSP that have occurred in the reporting period. Our our GSP wasn't even adopted during our reporting period, but we did use the opportunity to talk about some of the progress that has been made today on implementation. For example, you completed and submitted the first annual report. So that that's a good implementation activity in and of itself. so that, that's a, a good implementation activity in and of itself. Additional model upgrades were made in this annual report, and more are planned, as is in your implementation section of your GSP. The groundwater recharge assessment tool has now been developed in the sub-basin and is ready for application. This will be a good assistance for some of the potential floodmore projects that are envisioned for the sub-basin. So that was a, a good milestone accomplishment. As Michael mentioned, the Spring 2022 monitoring data have already been compiled, and they're being readied for submittal. The deadline for that first annual, first semi-annual submittal is July 1st. And then I mentioned improvements that are ongoing with the monitoring networks. There are more planned. Michael also mentioned the replacement wells that are needed now to improve access. When it's a dry year like this and we have everyone pumping, we can't really get what we, what we need, which is static water levels. We want to be monitoring what's going on in the aquifer, not what's going on in a pumping well. So it's important for us that not only we have the well not be pumping, but the well needs to have recovered somewhat from time periods of pumping, and that's really difficult to do when we need those wells in a dry year. So the more dedicated monitoring wells that we have, the better with respect to being able to access and get the correct information for the analysis. We also have new wells at locations to fill data gaps that we weren't quite, we didn't quite have all of the areas covered for all of the sustainability indicators that we have in the sub-basin that we've been monitoring. So those are being planned as well. And then finally, your programmatic EIR is in progress. That's going to assist with early implementation of the projects and management actions. I think that's a, a nice tool to have under your belt to move everything forward much more quickly than, than otherwise would be possible. And so if we go to the next to the last slide, you can see here that the annual report and data are posted on the Sigma portal. I've given you a little link there in the lower right-hand corner just for your reference. You can download the annual report and then all of the GSP information, including the water use data, right off of the website. You can also just look at the water use data that's posted there beneath this map. You, you can scroll on down and see the water use template data that we prepared for the annual report, and it also lists the changes in groundwater and storage by the principal aquifer. And then if you scroll on down to the bottom, you can find each one of the representative monitoring wells. And if you ever want to see data from any of those wells in particular, you can just click on those wells. So there's a lot of good, useful information there. You can also go to a map viewer on this and see a wider area and other GSPs as well. And so, thank you. That's very much the summary that I have for you. The last slide there just simply shows the back cover of your GSP, and I'll be glad to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Great thorough report, Phyllis. Questions? Annual report, two months into our plan. Every part together for that sort of time period, that's for sure.
It was a push.
Are no hands raised?
Thank you very much.
That we have our GSP information?
Um, so I, Deputy Montalvo, I serve as the plan manager for the GSP, and I have a bit of an update this evening on the implementation of the GSP. As you know, it's, it kind of provides a roadmap to sustainability over a 20-year timeframe. Included in the GSP are projects to be implemented by member agencies and a variety of programs to be implemented by the GSAs. The GSP is currently being reviewed by DWR, as we've talked about earlier, and we expect to hear from them by January of 2024 on whether the plan meets requirements or revisions are needed. But until then, we're tasked with implementing the GSP as written and reporting on it annually, as Phyllis described, and then updating the plan in five years. So, so as we begin this implementation phase and look towards this next fiscal year, staff started by developing a more detailed five-year budget for the Westerleksa Basin GSA. And we're using that to inform this year's fiscal budget. Our goal in that process was to ensure that the plan aligns with what we committed to within the GSP, that we coordinated with the Easterleksa Basin GSA, our neighboring GSA within the sub-basin, to enable development of basin-wide programs and approaches where appropriate. And we endeavored to keep costs relatively stable over the timeframe. The early implementation support activities that are included within the GSP identified in, or focus on developing programs and practices to provide the data, information, and resources needed to comply with Sigma and including filling in the data gaps that Phyllis was mentioning and addressing issues that may arise as we move forward through the GSP implementation process towards sustainability. So to give you an idea of the plan for this coming year and what's included in the budget that will be asked, or you'll be asked to consider later this evening, I'd like to walk you through each of the ISAs or the implementation support activities that are included within the GSP and what we're working toward in this next fiscal year. So that'll give you an idea of, of what's included in the budget. And then I'll end with a table showing what the estimated costs are. And, and that'll include both this year as well as, as next year and, or actually the next five years. So, um, I kind of talked about this. Sorry about that. Um, so the implementation support activities, one and two. Number one really deals with the annual reporting and monitoring and outreach, these ongoing activities that we're required to do. ISA number two deals with addressing the data gaps that were mentioned earlier. And, and funding have been, has been included in, in the budget to, to do that. And as mentioned, we're also seeking grant funding. ISA number three involves developing an accounting mechanism for, for groundwater within the sub-basin, and that is an ongoing process that will take about two years. ISA number four addresses implementation of projects and management actions. And as Phyllis mentioned, we are in the process of developing a programmatic EIR. The draft was funded under a grant and should be circulated later this summer. And, um, the GSAs, through that process, committed to funding the final PEIR, which will be completed in 2023, and that will be funded jointly by, by the two GSAs. And so you'll see that within the budget as well. ISA number four also includes developing a domestic well mitigation program over the first two years. Something for that included also. ISA number five involves development of an action plan if the minimum thresholds or MTs are exceeded and may result in an undesirable result. That plan would be jointly completed with the Easterleksa Basin GSA later this, this year, this fiscal year, I should say. And ISA number six provides regular, for regular updates to the groundwater model to facilitate the annual reporting, similar to what Phyllis was describing. It would also include addressing the land use studies and incorporating that into the model, as Phyllis mentioned. And then it also includes maybe larger refinements as we look towards updating the GSP. And so we're preparing to do that probably in the three and four of, of the schedule. So we're prepared for doing the analysis that will be required as we update the GSP in year five. Actually, and then ISA number seven is related to the data management system. So the existing data management system that we have in place was developed by the consultant team for, to, to facilitate developing of the GSP. So it, it met their needs, and it also complies with our requirements for Sigma. GSAs are required to have a data management system. But as we look towards implementation, I think it, it makes sense for us to consider if the existing system meets our long-term needs or are there going to be other needs that the GSAs will need as we consider and implement the, the GSP. And so that's what, what this item really includes is, is simply looking at what our needs are for, for now and in the future, and then planning accordingly. And so future plans, if we need to improve the, the data management system, that information will be brought back to the board in the future. ISA number eight is coordination and planning integration. There's a lot of planning processes that really relate to what we do. And so there's urban water management planning and ag water management planning, integrated regional water management plans, as well as the, the groundwater management planning that are happening in our neighboring sub-basins. And so it's coordination with those different processes to ensure that the GSP stays aligned with those and vice versa. And as mentioned earlier, two of our neighboring sub-basins are currently in the process of revising their GSPs to address issues that, that were identified through the DWR process. And so we'll want to engage with understanding kind of how that works. Then lastly, on this slide, ISA number nine, it deals with well registration. And as you can see, there's several steps that are identified within the GSP in developing a, a well registration program. And the first would be outreach for one, for the first year, and then a voluntary program over the next couple of years, followed by an expanded program. This ISA was, was tied to the demand management program under ISA number four that is a tool that we could use, but the Westerleksa Basin GSA isn't planning on that at this time. It's, it's a tool if needed, but, but that is something that the Easterleksa Basin GSA is needing to pursue. And, and so they will be developing a well registration program along with a demand management program. And the, the, the Westerleksa Basin GSA could consider, if they wished to, and that's something that, that would need to be considered and talked about, is whether or not they wish to pursue development of a well registration program and at what level and when. And so those are things that could be considered in the future. But there isn't any commitment within the GSP to, to do that at this time. ISA number 10 includes the development of financing strategies. As mentioned earlier, there's grant funding opportunities coming up later this year. So we're preparing to submit an application, and there's funding included within the budget to do that. We're also looking at additional grant opportunities and funding opportunities as they come about. And ISA number 11 includes incorporating, developing an ongoing, constantly being updated project list that enables grant funding. Many times, there has to be a grant listed on a project list in order to be able to include it into a grant application. And so we included this ISA into the GSP to facilitate an ongoing update of that project list. And so this would include a small amount of money to incorporate any additional projects that are in the GSP that are to, already included in what they call an OPTI system that's being utilized right now by the Integrated Regional Water Management Plan. Locally, so, so that is the list of the ISAs. And this is what the overall costs are anticipated to be. The first year, you can see highlighted there in yellow and outlined in green. And, and those numbers are then incorporated into the draft budget that will be before you play this evening. You can also see that we have estimated ranges and estimated amounts for future years, and that will be refined over time as we move forward. As you can see, we can also, we also try to help keep, keep costs relatively stable over the course of the time, although, you know, things will shift around a little bit. But that was, that was the goal. That's all I have for you this evening, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Yes?
Just because it's not anticipated to be used, or would it actually cost zero every year for us?
Um, that's because we haven't committed to anything. The other item on that list for that particular ISA involves estimates of, of crop consumptive use, and that's being funded currently planned by the Terlock Irrigation District. They are planning on purchasing the land IQ programming for the, the district, which would facilitate that data. Now, the other interesting thing is that, that East Terlock Sub basin GSA will be estimating it in, through a different manner. It's still estimating crop consumptive use using satellite imagery, but it's a different methodology. So we will need to work with the consultant team as we update the information in the model over the coming years to see what the differences are and kind of work through that. So that, that will likely be an, an action item in a future year, once we have some data and.
Evening again. So for 2223, operating budget, we have $576.913. That's between the basin projects and our normal. Yeah. And so we have our, we've kind of gained a baseline with costs for meetings and different things along those lines. And we tend to be in a good position. So then the next one would be the membership dues. And then, any questions?
Is there any grant income?
Grant income that's on here anywhere that I'm missing? Or or that you're projecting to use for your expenditures?
So far, we have accounted for that in prior budgets.
It's existing, but it's included here.
Yeah.
Second.
A public comment.
That'll have you call the roll or call the vote, please, Jennifer.
Alternate Director Alves. Director Buck. Director Espinoza. Director Maldonado.
Aye.
Director Odom.
Yes.
Vice Chair Duritzma.
Yes.
Chair Alamo.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Michael. And now for well construction permitting process, Michael Cook.
Evening, Chair and members of the board. As I used to say now again for something completely different. As you know, and the sigma, lots been happening in terms of, you know, how how are basins managed, they manage locally? And so some authority now has been afforded to the local GSA to insert themselves in the well permitting process that ordinarily is a. Power or action reserved to the county under state and to the counties under state law. So I go through what's changed in our area. So you understand as you deal with your growers, customers, constituents, you know what's going on in our region and how. This Westerlock Sub Basin GSA is responding to that those changes in 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 law. So as I mentioned, there's a new role for GSAs now in the well permitting process. It supplies in Stanslos County and Berset County. And then more recently, the governor's executive orders kind of add a little bit of flavor of that too, that kind of overrides. Both counties and creates a little bit of confusion because there is some mismatch. But I think the process that we've evolved addresses all three counties is going to work quite well. So let me get to that for you. So firstly, Stanslos County, their new groundwater warden says a new well must be compliant with the adopted GSP. They refer the well permit to the GSA. They give us thirty days to look at that. And render a decision whether it's compliant or not with our GSP. This ordinance applies to extraction wells only. And so an extraction well is basically something that's more than two acre feet per year. In or, you know, kind of diminish, 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 de minimis domestic well. I mean, it doesn't apply to replacement wells. So if you replace it like for like, you don't have to go through this process. And there's a provision that says water resources management's management practices of public agencies. Over are not subjects to the ordinance. So what does that mean? So the near CSD, as you develop a new well, you won't have to go through this process. And I do need to follow up with Christie McKinnon from Stanslos County, who is here for Toronto Irrigation District. We have a number of. Drainage wells. Would that be considered a water resource management practice invented to drill a new one? Would that be subject to the to the ordinance? But anyway, so that's the provision in Stanslos County. Berset County is kind of the the backward. I say backwards in a. Prejudiced manner, but just a different approach. Basically, all wells are outlawed, but unless the GSA says they're okay. So in Stanslos County, they're approved effectively as long as the GSA is on board with that. So basically it says groundwater mining, which is non sustainable pumping is prohibited. And in Berset County, that means this provision shall prohibit the construction of wells. They're concerned that with conditions in Berset County, particularly the Berset Basin, that new wells would adversely impact their non sustainable pumping that's going on right now. However, a new well could be approved if the GSA or Sustainability Agency determines that the planned well is consistent with the GSP. And unlike Stanslos County, the applicant has to go to the GSA first to get that determination. Once they've got a letter from the GSA, then they can go for the well permitting process with Berset County rather than apply for the permit. And then county refers that to the GSA. And like Stanslos County. Replacement wells are generally exempt unless they kind of expand a little bit and result in more mining or unsustainable yield. And then de minimis wells or smaller wells are also exempt from that provision. And that's something that I presented a similar presentation to the TID board during the week and had to do some research to. To figure out what things were exempt from the Berset County ordinance. And then more recently, in early March, the governor declared a drought state of emergency. And said that there will be no new wells, including replacement wells, as we found out. Unless the GSA determines that the well would not be inconsistent with any sustainable groundwater management program. And so again, puts another wrinkle on it and forces all counties in the state to refer new wells to the GSA. Again, Berset and Stanslos were already doing that, so we're ahead of the curve. But for some parts of the state, this is causing causing some problems. So the so the GSA determines if it's consistent with the GSE, GSP. And then the county must determine whether the whether the proposed will interfere interferes with nearby wells or will cause subsidence. Whereas in, you didn't have this potentially, the GSA would have to determine whether there's subsidence or not. So there's some conflict between the state and the county regulations, but obviously state regulations always supersede.
With the state regulations, Michael, do you anticipate at some point they will roll those back? Being that it's the current drought state of emergency? Or do you think that they'll just change the title and those will stick around?
But but kind of what what Herb mentioned earlier, I see the drought state of emergency may go away, but legislation like AB twenty twenty one will come in and implement something like this through a legislation. And actually could be even more restrictive than this. So again, not to get on my soapbox, but we all understood sigma was all about local control, right? We got to decide how to be sustainable. And now you're seeing the states saying, okay, while you're at it, could you work on this? And could you take care of that and all that stuff? So state priorities are now being forced onto the locals. It's all related to groundwater sustainability, but just a different approach. And so what do we do in the Westerlock GSA to respond? And obviously you know about this and we've all been informed via email. But we have been issuing letters for new applications affirming that the new well is not inconsistent with the GSP. Those have three sets of language and we just said, is it compliant, was it consistent, was it not inconsistent? This is the language we chose has all has the same effect. We won't, we won't affect the ability to implement the GSP at this time. What's that decision based on? Right now, we don't have extraction limits in our sub basin. And at this time, we're not exceeding any of our sustainable sustainable management criteria. But as you saw in Phyllis's annual report, it's been a rough couple of years and the aquifer is in decline again. Whether that's long term or short term, we don't know. We haven't had a chance to put our management actions in place yet to kind of address that. And so we'll see as we manage the basin over the next two or three years, what the general direction is, whether we start to recover a little bit. But at this time, we have no reason to say a new well would not stop our ability to implement our GSP. Big difference too in our part of the world in the Westerlock GSA growers do have access to surface water. Established conjunctive use program. It certainly helps. And the other, the other thought is too, is that we're not converting new land into agricultural production, right? These are growers already farming already adding a well. And that, you know, adding a new well won't make basin unsustainable. And if in the future we have to go to demand reduction, the best way to do is have everybody who has a well cut back just a little bit. Rather than anybody with a new well saying, you can't do it. So it's like a kind of shared responsibility of everybody in the region to manage the aquifer, not just placing that burden on the on the new people. They're just a philosophical approach. So I want to thank the board for giving your staff some flexibility to implement this kind of response before we had a chance to bring it to the board. The timing with your board meetings didn't work. And there was some concern that's the counties last year worked through, worked their way through these ordinances. It effectively had a moratorium on on well permits that are backing up the applications. The drought was getting worse and there was some concern that growers would be out. So. And we got ahead of you a little bit and started issuing these letters. And though we did obviously talk to board leadership and also form technical advisory committee and emailed the entire board to let you know what we were doing. And just to make sure that wasn't a big concern that we would bring it back to you for formal recognition and approval. So as part of that too, there's some acknowledgements the applicant has to make. That in the future pumping could be limited. We don't give the impression that I have a well permit, you pump forever, no matter how much you want. Because the Westerlock GSA said that's okay. There may be future pumping limitations and they would apply to everybody. There may be new programs in place for for well owners like well registration, like Debbie mentioned. Or other things and just understand now you have a well on the Westerlock GSA. There may be rules in the future. And also another important provision, I talked about the conjunctive use program that if you have access to surface water, which most of these people do. You must continue to use that surface water as it's available. So if you're allotment this year is twenty inches, use your twenty inches and then usual well as well. It's it's a way to make sure people don't. You know, trade their surface water away and then pump more when that surface water is available to them. So again, that's something that Toronto Irrigation District Board has worked on with their farmer to farmer transfer program. It's something that's been reflected here because again, that that ability to have a new well is contingent upon the fact that we do have access to service water in our sub basin. And we want to keep that that resource being used in our area.
Back on those acknowledgements.
But I think most people are happy to get a new well. Most of the people are that I've seen are larger growers or they have wells, they're already. Most of them, yeah, they're all in the Toronto Irrigation District. And so this is really no big deal to them. This is business as usual. And so that's it so far. We've have six applications from Stanslos County, six applications from Berset County. The ones in Berset County, they mainly focus this western southwestern portion of the district or the the agency. And then the ones in Stanslos County have kind of been a little bit all over the place. Houston area, Keys, as Keys, the air area, and then out towards the San Joaquin River. So just a little bit of everything. Of those six, of those twelve, two of those were for replacement wells, one in Berset and one in Stanslos County. So so we've seen so far, I think, expecting to die down. I think this is a backlog we've been inundated with, but that's what's been happening so far and we'll keep you updated. Again, a copy of the letter we've been sending out was included in your packet. We worked a lot with the staff and then obviously with legal counsel to put that letter together. Any questions for me at this time?
Questions online?
No public comment.
Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a person a second on move to approve any process. Thank you, Curtis, is there a second? Then first and second, any further comments or questions, concerns? Here and on all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Thank you. Motion passes. Board meeting format. Item five, Valerie.
Valerie Kinky, Westerlot Council. I'm going to provide kind of an update and options for board format moving forward and we can kind of have a discussion about it. I think as most people know, the COVID nineteen has. Sent many public agencies into a mode of meeting remotely. There was AB three sixty one, which was then codified into the government code, which allowed a relaxation of Brown Act requirements. Before COVID, if you were meeting and you had certain board members that were teleconferencing in remotely. There was several requirements which would require that board member to open that specific area up and allow public to participate from that area. So if you're calling in your car, you kind of had to pick up, I don't know, the hitchhikers that wanted to come in. Or if you, if you were calling in from your home, you really did have to post it and let people participate from that location. So the government code three sixty one relaxed those requirements, but that relaxation was based on a couple of requirements. One is that there had to be a executive order or a state of emergency in place. And then secondly, you had to find that social distancing requirements were required. You can do that by two different things. One, there were social distancing, either local or state requirements. Or two, the board had to vote by a majority that it was not safe to meet in person. So we find ourselves in a situation where the, and thirdly, you had to re. Reattest to those two items being in place every thirty days. So everyone was doing that for a good long time. And the state of emergency for COVID nineteen actually still is in place. It's been in place for almost two years. The governor did kind of strip out portions of that, but it it remains intact. So that first component is met. But the second component of either finding local or state recommendations for social distancing is becoming very difficult. Hardly any local or state social distancing requirements can be found anymore. Trust me, I've looked for them and they've quickly disappeared, which puts this board in kind of an odd predicament that you would need to find. Make some sort of finding as a board with majority vote that it's not safe to meet. It in in person. I mean, my sense is no one really did that to meet the AB three sixty one requirements because hardly any boards had kind of a medical. Basis upon which to make that finding. So it is getting more and more difficult to meet remotely. What does that mean for you guys? It it means that you can either search high and low and find some social distancing requirements and kind of continue to reaffirm every thirty days. That's what you want to do. You can meet in person as long as you have a quorum in person, you meet the requirements. If folks want to participate remotely but not open up those locations, they can participate as the public, but they can't count towards a quorum. And then, of course, for the public, you can always continue to do what we're doing today, which is allow people who don't make up a quorum of the board to participate remotely. That's what a lot of folks have been doing. Many people have gone back into these in person meetings and kept a remote kind of for public participation. That's not required. So you could just go back to the old way of doing business where everyone has to show up. If you want to remote teleconference in, you either have to have that AB three sixty one resolution in place. Or you have to now post and open the location or you can participate as the public. So those are the options. And that's where we're at.
Requirement require a three day notification as well on that remote location?
That's right. So in the agenda, you'll have to say, you know, Joe's sedan will be going down ninety nine at this time. That will be open and this location will be open. So you really have to know where you're at. I mean, it.
And plus three days in advance.
Yeah, three days in advance. So it really does make it very difficult for remote teleconferencing unless you know you're going to be at home and then you post that location. The uncomfortable part is you you do have to open it up if people show up. Yep. So that's it for me. We'll, we'll continue, I think, with Jennifer to kind of, you know, communicate with the board, see what we want to do. If there are future social distancing requirements that are put back in place, it could trigger that requirement. But until then, I think we'll check and and make sure there's a quorum and go from there.
Board. Okay, thank you. Okay, with comments on the board, I guess any other comments on the board next on the agenda?
Good to see everyone.
Guess that answers our question rather, right? Okay, with that, we have one item for closed session, which is conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation. California Government Code Section five four nine five six dot nine or point nine. One potential case. I'll entertain a motion. We're going to a closed session. Moving second it all in favor?
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Thank you. We're proceeding to close session. We'll come back here. We're now back in open session. I'd just like to report out a closed session that there is no items to report. And I'll declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you, guys, for coming.